Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. We had an executive session on July 24th at 6:30 PM for purposes of a legal discussion. And we had a, it's not on here, but we had an executive session earlier this evening also for a legal discussion. That will be reported again next meeting. At this point, I'd like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there is anyone online that would like to address the board, you can click the raise hand button on Zoom. Anyone in the audience can raise your hand to be recognized, come up to the podium. And what you will do is state your name and address for the record and then comments to the board. Typically, what we do is we allow three minutes for comment and the board may or may not respond. So I just want to let everybody understand the procedure here. Yes, sir, you had your hand raised. Oh, whichever. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time. My name is Dawn Snyder. I live at 45 North Marshall Street, and I'm here alongside neighbors from Old East York, particularly North Marshall, where a feral cat crisis has gone unaddressed for a decade. Over the years, residents began feeding stray cats. Today, these colonies have exploded to an unimaginable size. Since we cannot trap every animal, our neighborhood has become overrun. Backyards, playgrounds, and flower beds are littered with feces, and I mean littered with feces. Children cannot play outside. One of our neighbor's children came in from outside covered in feces. And families endure constant smell of urine, as I had to shut my window last night because I could not stand the smell outside. Beyond sanitation, these unchecked colonies threaten public health. Feral cats can carry rabies, toxoplasmosis, roundworms, and fleas, whereas one of our neighbors had a severe flea intestation in their yard and then brought into the home based on the number of cats that we have. Our wildlife suffers too. Cat colonies draw possums, skunks into our streets at night, disrupting local ecosystems and putting our pets at risk. Each day, we delay these colonies' grow, and so do the risks to our community's safety, health, and well-being. It's time for decisive action. Under our existing dog ordinance, Chapter 105 in Springingsbury Township, us pet owners, dog owners, cannot allow our dogs to run at large because we will be held accountable. I feel that the people that are feeding these cats should also be held accountable as well. We ask that prohibited unregulated feeding of strained feral cats within the township require anyone who cares for a community cat colony to register its location with Animal Control and present proof of spray, neuter, and vaccination. We can no longer trap these animals because they are fed so well. Authorize fines of other enforcement measures for noncompliance with exceptions of the, obviously, the TNR participants. By passing the ordinance, at least we will be able to have sanitary place spaces for our children, reduce the spread of disease by these cats being vaccinated, as well as mandatory sterilization, and also curb the nighttime visits from possums and skunks. Give Animal Control clear authority to manage the colonies humanly and effectively. Old East York deserves the same public health safeguards and animal control standards that other parts of our township already have. We urge you to draft and adopt this feeding ban so that we can finally begin to reclaim our neighborhood for families, pets, and wildlife. If you want to understand how bad it is, I did bring pictures.
Thank you. I understand that it's an issue.
Huge.
So, Mark, I don't know if you want to address this a little bit, and then maybe James can talk about possible ordinance and enforcement. I know that we have some challenges with animal control because they don't take care of stray cats.
My next-door neighbor, who also has overgrown around her entire yard, probably has about 20 to 30 cats in her backyard, and I'm not exaggerating. I wish I was. She moved in 12 years ago. We have tried other measures, our own TNR, trying to hire TNR. Unfortunately, they're overwhelmed as well. A neighbor, Kathy Sheehan, she spent over three hours trying to find a TNR, like six or seven places, and they are basically, they're exhausted. They don't have any more resources either.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did reach out. Manchester Township has an ordinance. They had a feral cat problem, I think, in 2007, '08, '09, some in that timeframe. And they were able to get it under control with a trap spay-neuter program. Their animal control officer at the time, in conjunction with local residents, were trapping the cats and having them spayed, neutered, and returned back into the population. Their animal control officers, the same animal control officer we have, and that same person is the same control officer for the majority of the county. She does not deal with cats anymore. So she only is a dog officer, basically. So our contracted animal control officer will only give us suggestions of other agencies that will help, but her herself will not get involved with cats. And one of the issues is regarding control officers, there's no one that's, there's not a list of control officers. It's like two or three that cover the entire county. So I'm at a loss of what mechanism we could, we can have an ordinance, but if we don't have an enforcement mechanism, that's the problem that I see from my perspective.
Yeah, if there are people who are feeding and you know who they are.
Four people in the first block of North Marshall Street. We have addressed them personally with no success. Though one in particular lives beside me, literally, she doesn't come out of her house, she doesn't answer the door, she doesn't have a car, she's very odd, but she will not, she only communicate with one neighbor, another neighbor who's feeding, two neighbors, I guess, that are feeding the cats as well. And by them feeding them, we can't trap them because no matter what we put in that trap to try to spay and neuter them ourselves, all of us are willing to trap and neuter them with our own resources, but we've done that. But it's gotten so big that it's out of control. We can't trap them at all anymore.
And we did, uh...
If you would hold your comment, just...
She's with me.
Let this lady finish, and then you can come up and address the board, please.
Yeah, I'm done, so I'll let Kathy, she's with me.
Okay.
We did, for two years...
Name and address, please, for the...
Oh, Kathleen Sheehan, 21 North Marshall. Sheehan, S-H-E-E-H-A-N. Twice in the last probably four years, we hired a professional trapper because it was out of control. And when we contacted him a couple of months ago, he no longer can do cats because there's nowhere to put them. The SPCA is not taking them, nothing. So there's nowhere. And I spent, like Dawn said, three to four hours trying to find homes for these little tiny kittens. Nobody is taking them. All the cat rescues are full. So it's an issue. And it's a sanitary issue, really, too. So...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Scott Tiedebohl, T-I-E-D-E-B-O-H-L, 39 North Marshall. I'm on the other side of this lady. So we had to install security cameras because we kind of had her come on our property and put little toys of cats and things like that on our yard and things when we had caught traps. So I trapped eight cats in seven days at one time in the spring in my yard, and we had got them relocated to other homes and things of that nature. But there are literally every day now at least five or six cats sitting on my stoop. So the kid, my son went out to his toy area to play and came back in covered in cat feces. And there's just nothing, they literally get chewy boxes delivered. They do not have any house pets, but there are chewy boxes delivered twice a week for food. So it's clear that they're coming. I've actually opened a police investigation, which came on my property, installed security cameras now, but it's just, you know, kind of ridiculous. She puts profane items in her window pointing to my house, you know, like middle finger statues, because we've asked her to stop. So it's just, there's got to be some way we can enforce something. And her backyard is so overgrown that you can't even see in to see how many cats there are, but they just come in and out of the fence, and it'll be eight or 10 at a time each evening.
So I think Mark brings up a good point. The enforcement mechanism is one, but two, the identification of the host, or I'm not going to call them the owner because these are feral cats, so, you know, I don't know whether they would technically qualify as an owner, but ordinances that I've seen restrict feeding of feral cats, and then that becomes a zoning issue. And the zoning officer would then be responsible upon alert. You know, you're not going to have a zoning officer driving through the neighborhoods looking for feeding of feral cats because you're just never going to catch that. You're going to need, you know, somewhat of a reporting mechanism from the neighbors, which would be the trigger to send that zoning officer out. But again, it becomes a monetary fine on whomever is engaged in this activity. But does it ultimately address the feral cat issue? And again, I've probably read more about this in the last 24, 48 hours than most normal humans should, but that's fine. I get the issue and I get the frustration because, you know, when these colonies come about, it creates, you know, they kind of land there and stay there. Even if you remove the feral cat, another one's moving in. It's something that...
If they're being fed.
If they're being fed, it's an attractive nuisance to a degree, and that's a legal term. So if it's an attractive nuisance and there's issues that are arising with, you know, injuries to children, injuries to other humans, injuries to your own pets, for example, passing of rabies, there's potential civil or criminal action that could occur as well that would be outside of any ordinance that the township would pass. So I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm giving you some options from a legal standpoint that are potential avenues to deal with this. But I'm happy to find some other township ordinances that have addressed this situation, and perhaps we can come up with one that the board would consider and just take it step by step there. But again, from a township perspective, it's a monetary issue. It's a zoning issue, if at all.
Chapter 2, West Manchester.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We all, most of us have dogs. We don't want our dogs to get sick to even have to get to that point.
So if we figure this out, can we figure out my groundhog problem?
They're not very friendly animals either.
No. Have you ever been chased by one?
I've seen the damage that they can cause.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
If we do catch these traps on our property destroying things, what, I mean, other than just getting them spayed and neutered, do we have any other abilities to dispose of the animals? I mean, they're pests at this point, right? I'm not saying this from, but at some point, if the squirrel, or there's a squirrel or raccoon on your property, right, you don't spay and neuter the raccoon. So it's a pest at this point, it's not a home-owned cat.
While I agree with you, the position...
Legally, I guess the question is legally, what is there?
The position of Pennsylvania is that you are not allowed to kill feral cats.
So where can you put them, then? If you catch them, if they're on your yard, I mean, other than the governor's property, we let them go there?
That would be a good thought.
So there's no thing we can do with these cats when they're caught legally?
Other than getting them spayed?
Which the SPCA will not do.
Are they...
They said they will not spay and neuter them anymore.
No.
We've checked.
Hmm.
But we have no recourse at this point. We catch them and just let them back, let them go back out and say, hey, please don't do it again.
I have to catch them, really.
Yeah, exactly. Why catch them? Other than moving.
I wish I had...
Other than moving out of the township, we've got nothing we could do.
I wish I had an answer for you.
Okay.
Is it against the law to kill the cat, the feral cat?
That's what the Game Commission website says.
Let me just caution everybody, I'm not up here to be your personal lawyer. I'm the lawyer for the township.
Is it telling us what we can and cannot do?
I'm telling you what the township can and cannot do.
Pennsylvania law was if you feed them, you're the owner. If you feed them, you take them, you take them care of.
I don't know that answer, and I would suggest you get legal counsel to interpret that for you. I'm speaking on behalf of the township and what our ordinances are currently in place. I've given suggestions as to what the township can do, and if you've listened to my comments, I've laced in some words that might be of interest for you to discuss with whatever legal counsel you have. That's not legal advice to you, that's informational. So that's about the extent of what I'm going to answer on that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Kirsch, 2700 Eastwood Drive in Springingsbury. Well, yeah, of course. My question is one of curiosity rather than calamity, and I don't know if it's even, you know, possible to ask it in this forum, but about a month ago at a school board meeting, I found out quite accidentally about the desired rate increase by York Water, about 30%, and that caught my attention. You know, normally, rate increase is just, you know, yeah, so what. And so I did some research, you know, through the company website and the PUC finding, and come to find out this week, Tuesday and Wednesday, they had PUC hearings because I guess the regulatory agencies got involved right over here at the county building, formerly the Graham Packaging. And luckily, I was able to sign up and go over there and, you know, voice some concern. But the thing that kind of struck me odd, and maybe it's only my naivete and not, you know, anything unusual, but, you know, there were two sessions each day, one and six. The first, Tuesday was in-person, Wednesday was by phone, which I did, was able to follow up that. And I don't know what their service area is, but I was one of six people commenting in person on 1 o'clock, and 6 o'clock, I couldn't even get through on the phone, which I attributed to that maybe nobody showed up, so they, because I was on the phone like an hour and finally got disconnected. And then the next day, which was telephone-only, there were like 30 or 40 people on the, you know, still compared to the service area, but, and most of those were from Gettysburg, a matter with a private community there whose builder had sold their self-contained water and sewer system to York, and they are not having a happy time with how that's occurring. But anyway, my question that I was leading up to is, is the township also a customer? Because I know, you know, there's an item here for Pennsylvania American Water. I know they have a big deal with the city of York, you know, they had to take that over because of the budget problems, and now they have, they're bombarding me with commercials on YouTube about how wonderful they are for doing that. But I just wondered, is the, I know the city has like, there's lower rates for fire service and things like that, but is the township also a water customer with them? And did the 30% hike generate any concern by the township? You know, I just was curious about that.
Comments, Mark?
We, this township, all the township buildings and the park are customers of York Water.
Okay, well, I guess, thank you for that.
PA American is a different issue for us.
Yeah, no, I just, I say, I know there's different companies. That was the only reference I was making with that. And I know there's an interest with some, yeah, surprise payments, but I, and maybe, like I say, my naivete, maybe a 30% hike doesn't spark anyone else's disturbance as much as it did me, but I just...
We don't have any more to say about it than you do, and it's the utility commission that decides that.
Yeah, well, I mean, they were right over, you know, they're as close as they're going to get.
They rent space over there or whatever with the county, but...
Okay, well, thank you for, you know, thank you for your patience with me. Okay, thank you.
Can I just tell your last name?
K-I-R-S-C-H. Jeff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Yes, sir.
Patrick Nace, 1208 Druck Valley Road. Yes, ma'am. Good evening, guys. Sorry, I've never been to one of these meetings or anything.
Okay.
But I live off Druck Valley Road, coming across the corner from Sherman, and I always have cars flying up the road and stuff there. I have a daughter with a very complex medical history, and she has autism. I didn't know if there's any chance that we could get a signage before the bend. Right at where my house is at, there's a blind spot coming around a corner, and there's all these cars flying up there, and my daughter, you know, my wife outside, too, it was just a close call, and I just have some concerns for how fast people are driving there. Just a sign for watch out for children or something.
What's your address, sir?
1208 Druck Valley Road, York, PA. I guess that most cars come flying up, they come flying up from the Sherman side.
Okay. That's something we can install.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then, at this time, I would like to move, um... Yeah, we have a presentation from Explore York.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my understanding I have about 10 minutes, so I'll make sure I don't get long-winded and keep my phone handy, because I could talk about this stuff all night long. So my concern, okay, thank you. We are, my name is Melissa, and I'm with Explore York, and we, I'll explain a little bit more about what Explore York does and who we are as we go along, but we are making the rounds and visiting all of these meetings throughout the county to just remind everyone our purpose and the value that we hopefully bring to all of our individual communities. So we are the official tourist promotion agency, and some people may not think of York County when they think of tourism and/or tourists, but we do a lot in that category. Our mission really is to maximize the spending that visitors are doing while they're here, and that, of course, is in addition to overnight stay and the phrase that we affectionately use, which is putting heads in beds, but also to have them eating and shopping while they're here visiting. And all of what we do is designed to sell and market and promote the counties, the county and the businesses that are members of Explore York. Oh, yeah, so we do have some trouble with our font. So you'll have to forgive the presentation, little issue with our fonts, but we have been around for 60 years. 1965 was when we started our, we were officially the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau and rebranded a few years ago to a little bit more action-oriented statement of Explore York. These are just some things that we do, and I already mentioned that we're the official tourist promotion agency of York, otherwise sometimes referred to as the destination marketing organization. So tourism, again, as I mentioned, no, we are not New York City or the beach or Las Vegas, but we certainly do hold our own when it comes to tourism. It is big business. Visitors spend, these numbers actually have just recently been updated slightly, but visitors are spending just over $1 billion, with a B, a billion, annually in York County when they're here. Tourism as an industry in York County supports now, the number is about 8,200 jobs, and we do rank third in the region for visitor spending. And the regions are calculated through the State Tourism Office, the Department of Community and Economic Development, and we are in that region with some of our neighbors like Lancaster County and Adams County. Tourism also does generate, it's now up to 60 million in state and local taxes, which then, of course, provides direct relief to our local residents and businesses here. One of our largest drivers of tourism to the area is sports, and we recognized that many years ago and decided to have a dedicated initiative to selling sports. And this isn't just, as the picture indicates, it's not just youth sports, it is all kinds of sports, professional bowling, golf, pickleball, wrestling, but lots and lots of youth sports with our facilities. This initiative alone, this Sport York initiative under our organization generates roughly an additional $25 million in economic impact throughout the year. And one of the things that we are very proud to say that we're hosting in '27, 2027, and '28 is the NCAA D3 men's baseball championship. And so that'll utilize a lot of the fields and facilities around the county. And for us, that would be our Super Bowl, right? That would be the equivalent of our Super Bowl. Lots of exciting things going on in Pennsylvania as a whole with the draft and, and I think the, something with Major League Baseball, which is escaping me right now, but this would be equivalent to something like that for us. In addition to sports tourism, we also do see a lot of group tour and meetings and conventions. These two smaller markets for us generated around 12,000 room nights in this past fiscal year, which just ended for us June 30th. When we add in our sports room nights, it's an additional 46,000. Last fiscal year, we did host 30 sporting events and then 18 meeting groups, and some of those meeting groups could be hobbyists. Of course, everyone's probably very familiar with the street rods and the traffic that comes along with that in June, but also lots of economic impact. So all of that are, those are events that run through our organization. We support them, we promote them, we help them when they arrive, and offer a whole host of other event services. One program that perhaps the Board of Supervisors are familiar with is our tourism grant program, and the funding from that program is received through a portion of the hotel occupancy tax. So you stay somewhere for $100, there's a 5% tax, if only, there's a 5% tax put on your hotel stay. Some of that money then goes into this grant program, which then helps to continue the cycle of tourism because we then invest in events and all kinds of other programs with the assumption that it will continue to bring visitors here and put more heads in beds. So the more occupancy tax we generate, the more money goes into the tourism grant program. And that is a program that is managed through our organization, but it is comprised of a committee outside of our organization that, there are some appointed seats on that committee, and we don't vote on Explore York, we don't vote on projects that do or do not get funded. So there is a pretty compelling application process and some reporting metrics that the events have to go through to, certainly to continue to get refunded. And there is a lot of geographic diversity across the county, so we really try not to focus in just one area. I mean, York County is 911 square miles, so it's anything from Dillsburg to Wrightsville to Shrewsbury, all parts in between, that we are trying to spread some of that funding throughout the county. Specific to Springingsbury Township, thank you. You have been a member of the Visitors Bureau since 2017, and we do appreciate that. We did do some funding for... We did do some funding for the America 250 PA Bell that was installed at Camp Security. And then, in addition to some of the ways that we can also help throughout the township, it would be wayfinding signs and welcome signage and things like that. But we, we also have roughly, roughly 50 member businesses that are situated within Springitsbury Township. And I know for a fact, for, for some of our sales and marketing efforts, we do a lot to support the Food Truck Friday event and the Sounds of Summer, so. That is it. This is our contact information. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but we did just want to take our show on the road and let everyone know what we're out there doing on behalf of our communities.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions?
George?
So Melissa, thank you very much for reaching out to the municipalities throughout York County, including coming to here to Springitsbury Township. I, for one, think that we have a lot of assets in York County, but particularly here, we have an interesting set of wonderful tourism assets here in Springitsbury Township between the casino. You mentioned the Sounds of Summer, Springitsbury Township Park, and you also mentioned Camp Security, which is a very important asset. We also have Rocky Ridge and the Rail Trail. So I'm just curious, is there a lot of focus on marketing those particular assets? And can you maybe elaborate how your organization helps bring people to Springitsbury Township with those assets?
Sure, yeah. One of our, we have what we refer to as marketing pillars, and probably the number one marketing pillar, well, maybe, maybe one and one, but would be our history, of course, and then our outdoor recreation. So you mentioned Rocky Ridge, Christmas Magic, the Rail Trail, all of what we do. Now, that's what we refer to as leisure marketing, right? So, and then, of course, a family that's coming for a volleyball tournament and has some free time, we're putting information in their hands. This is kind of our pinnacle piece. I left some on the back table. This is our annual travel guide for 2025. But my, I oversee all of the marketing communications and membership for the organization. And when it comes to leisure, one of the largest things that we are putting in our paid marketing efforts are the outdoor recreational offerings that we have. Because, yes, we have a lot of, of community assets. We don't have that one thing, right? There's a place a little north of here that has an amusement park that makes it really easy because people want to come there for the amusement park. We have lots and lots and lots of smaller things that we try to package together between our history offerings and the outdoor rec, the river and, you know, fishing and paddleboarding and pickleball and golf and all the things. So that is in our messaging, it's in our, it's in our visual assets that we produce. We have a whole lot of videos. Our website is yorkpa.org. We have a very robust blog that talks all about outdoor rec without getting really in the weeds. I could go on and on, but.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Shall I leave this here? Okay.
All right, now we'll move on to engineering reports. Do we, yep.
Hi, Sherri Wolf from Buchard Horton, filling in for Diana Young again this evening. She sent you the R Engineers Report for the period last week, and I'm here to see if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions?
All good.
Thank you. Okay, civil engineering, John.
Two, two very quick updates. First of all, tonight on your agenda, we're gonna adopt the James Meadows Development Road called.
Fading Way.
Thank you, fading way. So we, we're gonna submit that and, and perform some work out there. And I know that both Denny and Mark have been patiently waiting for us to get our permit from DEP for a couple of pipe projects. And so we, we got a couple of minor comments, which I told them were forthcoming, and forthcoming. And we got the comment, and we had to fill out this questionnaire, you're cutting any trees down? And there's some trees downstream that gotta be removed as part of these pipe replacements. And that threw us into a, another comment from DEP, and we had to do a bat survey. And so we, fortunately, we, the two pipes I'm talking about is one on Willshire, the other on Hawthorne. Apparently, there's, and I've been reading about this through the Game Commission, the white-nosed disease and all that. The bat population is way down. And so I'm happy to report there were no bats in the pipe. We had one in our hallway at our office last week, so. But there were none in the pipes at Springitsbury, so we, we can go past that hurdle and hopefully get our projects on, back on track to replace pipes and.
You gave me a statistic about the number of insects that bats eat.
Yeah, they make you watch this video to be, you know, if it's a historic thing, you gotta have a PhD guy, but for the bats, they let anybody do these kind of things. And I, after Andy from Public Works walked up a pipe, I said I could walk up a pipe, so. But there's a Penn State presentation on how much bats save in insect repellent and the economic impact of losing bat population is like $7 billion. And, I'm sorry, $7 trillion is what they said in the Globe. And I'm like, wow, that, that's a big number. But they, they are important. You don't see bats around nearly as much. I'm sure part of that is, you know, people ripping barns down and insulating their homes, they, they can't. And one thing I didn't know about bats is they're migratory, so they move out of the north and move to the south. I never knew bats were migratory, just never knew it, so.
I've seen them on the rail trail.
Yep, yep, so.
They might like it back there.
Most people love, and they're gonna be where the insects are, of course, to eat, but they do, you know, they're ugly, but they are, they perform a very important task. Thank you. If anybody have any questions on my report.
Questions for our engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have our consent agenda. And we have items. A through D. Anything that anybody would like to have removed for further discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. First is, let me get to it. Okay, authorization for township manager to execute the Safe Streets Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this, we were awarded this grant, $141,000 grant, a little while ago. And with the change in the federal administration, some things got reworked. So now the grant is ready to be executed. This grant is the planning grant for an overall look at the township's intersections, predominantly major intersections, and what can be done to improve pedestrian mobility and pedestrian safety and vehicle safety.
Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into the agreement, allow, authorize township manager to execute the Safe Streets and Roads Grant Agreement.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's see. This is making it difficult to see the whole title here. Can I borrow your? All right, next, we have authorization to execute amended and restated articles of agreement between Pennsylvania American Water Company and Springitsbury Township.
Mr. Chairman, after quite a while of negotiating with American, quite a while is an understatement. We are to the point where we are in the best position for the township, for the future, regarding our relationship with the American Waters wastewater treatment facility.
Questions, comments? Have a motion?
I'll move to authorize executing the amended and restated articles of agreement between Pennsylvania American Water Company and Springitsbury Township.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have the first of Denny's toys. Station to purchase 2025 John Deere Model 1575. I can't read the rest of this.
Mr. Chairman, this is a budgeted item in the general fund capital improvements budget for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the purchase of a 2025 Caterpillar 938.
John Deere.
I'm sorry, I'm, wrong one. 2025 John Deere Model 1575 four-wheel-drive tractor, snow blower, and rotary broom for, from Southern York Turf and Tractor in an amount not to exceed $57,570.06.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, next, we have authorization to purchase 2025 Caterpillar 938 wheel loader.
Mr. Chairman, this is in the shared sewer capital for the wastewater treatment facility for this year's budget.
I'll move to authorize purchasing the 2025 Caterpillar 938 wheel loader through Cleveland Brothers in an amount not to exceed $274,100.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, authorization to contract ream roofing to repair Fuel Island roof, replace South Side gutter, and remove skylights at the Public Works Facility in an amount not to exceed $34,650.
Mr. Chairman, the description is exactly what the work will be, and it is included in the budget.
Why are we taking out the skylights? Do they leak?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
I figured they would. Take them out. Okay. Good reason. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorization to contract with ream roofing to repair Fuel Island roof, replace South Side gutter, and remove skylights at the Public Works Facility in an amount not to exceed $34,650.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing under subdivisions and land development? Anything for communication from supervisors?
I just wanted to extend some compliments to the Public Works team. I received a, actually, a Facebook message from a constituent that expressed concern about a tree down in one of the recent weather events, and reaching out to the township manager. Crews were already being mobilized and on, and by the time I reached out to the manager and got a compliment back from that said constituent who thanked you for the prompt addressing that tree situation. So compliments to Public Works.
I just have one item. Go ahead, Don.
Go ahead, George.
I just have one item I want to bring up this evening. I thought it would be a good idea for a future board meeting to receive, for the board to receive an update on our ambulance service. And I say that from the perspective that sitting at the YALFOR meetings, there are comments made from time to time by the fire chief that lead me to believe the ambulance service maybe has some challenges occasionally with response times and filling gaps and so forth. And so I thought it might be a good idea for the board to be updated on the highlights of our agreement with them and maybe have someone from the ambulance service speak to any service issues and how they might be addressed, if there are any.
I will arrange that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Don?
Just reporting back that the YALFOR meeting for this month, YALFOR did not have a quorum, so no action was taken.
Anything else? Solicitors report, James.
Nothing to add to my report unless anybody has a question.
Add cats to chickens?
Chickens are gone. Flew the coop. Flew the coop.
Place chickens?
Yeah.
Any questions? All right, managers' report, Mark.
I actually do have two things. I wanted to try to schedule two dates for meetings, future meetings. As the board's aware, we sent out advertisements for police pension management services. We received 11 RFPs, which was a very good turnout. So my plan is Finance Director Jamie Reed and I are going to get that, do interviews with the firms. And then, from those interviews, get the pool of candidates down to four. And then, thinking that we'll give each of those four a 30-minute presentation to the police pension board. And that 30 minutes would be their presentation, including Q and A, that hopefully would get us a two-hour window. So my thought process in that is the presentations to the board would be in mid to late October. And then, at the November police pension meeting, the police pension board can make a decision on what firm they want to go with. So that being said, I would like to try to schedule tonight, get your availability, hopefully, to pick a date when we could do that work session. So one thought is October 15th is already on the schedule for the third budget meeting. Do we want to, my preference would be to leave that alone because we don't know if we're gonna need that third budget meeting or not, but it's up to the board. Or we pick an evening, the week of October 20th or the week of October 27th to have a work session, this two-hour work session. So I don't know what your preference would be, day and time? Well, time would be 6 o'clock, start at 6 o'clock. So I don't know if we want to try to solve that tonight, or do you want me to send an email out to the board and, and go from there?
We had a little bit of a discussion about it, and I don't remember where, where our heads were at at the end of that.
Well, Richard.
If we do it at the second budget meeting, or the last budget meeting date, and we need that date, then we have to schedule another budget. need that date, then we have to schedule another budget meeting date. So I think we were saying, why don't we just pick another date?
Two, we haven't needed the third budget meeting, I don't know, for how long.
For a long time.
But that's being presumptuous, that we're not going to need it this year. And my concern, and you shared the concern, is because the third budget meetings on a Wednesday, the second one's that previous Monday, so only two days before, if we know we need it, then we're scrambling around trying to schedule some other third meeting later in October.
I would rather schedule that meeting for another time than that, just because when we start getting toward the end of the budget cycle, we run out of time to get things done and get it presented.
Presented in time, yeah.
And get it approved. So it's probably better to keep that date open for its original intention.
I agree. So that, in my mind, that leaves the week of October 20th and the week of October 27th. Now, you already have other scheduled items that, both of those weeks. So the week of the 27th is a week, a board meeting. And the week of the 20th, I think, is a YALFOR meeting. So let me get to my calendar. So the week of the 20th, the 21st is a YALFOR Commission meeting.
We have the county association on the 29th.
That's, yes. So the week of the 20th, you got a YALFOR meeting and also a board supervisor meeting on the 23rd. So the week of the 27th is the York County meeting on the 29th. So the, that week of the 27th may have more available, you may be available more that week of the 27th. But it's, it's totally up to the board and what... And before you decide on that date, my second thing that I'm trying to schedule is the Camp Security Master Plan is at a point where, it's still in draft form, but the consultant wants to present that draft plan to the board before, so they, they can get comments from the board. So when they present the final plan, which the goal is to do that either in, at the November board meeting or the December board meeting, it gives them time to think about things. I was, in my mind, thinking that October 23rd board meeting, just having that presentation at 6:00, because that, that would be plenty enough time to have that presentation. So keep...
Essentially, a work session before...
A work session before the board meeting. So I know I just threw out a lot of things. So if you want me to send out an email, or we can go from there, or if we want to try to pick dates today, it's up to the board.
I support the work session on the 23rd for the Camp Security.
Would it make any sense to do that, this additional meeting, kind of in conjunction with that third budget meeting?
Say that again, Mr. Bishop.
Can we add this additional meeting the same night as the third budget meeting?
The Camp Security Master Plan?
I'm not sure which one we're talking about. Which one were you talking about for, before our regular meeting?
That's the police pension presentations. That's going to, I think that'll take two hours.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be on its own separate day.
Yes. Although...
What's on the 30th?
Nothing. It's the day after the association event. It's that rare opportunity to have that fifth Thursday in a month. Also a three-pay month, at least as far as I'm concerned.
Any reason not to do it on the fifth Thursday, the 30th?
Not from my perspective.
Although, I don't have my calendar with me, but generally, Thursday evenings are pretty good.
Don?
Good.
Good. Okay, there you go.
Eagles or Steelers are playing that night?
Mr. Dvorak, if you'd check your schedule just to make sure, and let me know. And then, if you're good, then I'll schedule that for the 30th and the Camp Security Master Plan for 6:00 on the 23rd before our regular board meeting.
I'll just add that you guys are going to have your hands full trying to go from 11:00 to 4:00. Big job.
That is, yeah.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next, we're on ordinances and resolutions. Authorization to advertise ordinance for no parking on Carroll Road, North Side, between Courtly Drive and Plymouth Road, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, as I reported to the board at the last board meeting, I recommend that this parking restriction be authorized, the ordinance be authorized for advertisement.
Mr. Chairman, I move for authorization to advertise ordinance for no parking on Carroll Road, North Side, between Courtly Drive and Plymouth Road, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have Resolution 2025-47, authorizing amendments to Article III, Section B of the York Area United Fire and Rescue Commission amended charter agreement dated October 17, 2017.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd just like to comment on this, I think, for Charles Benefit, who hasn't been at the YALFOR meetings. But currently at the YALFOR Commission meetings, there are a number of proposals being floated out there to change and amend the charter agreement. This particular batch that's in front of us tonight was proposed by the solicitor. And if I recall, he was characterizing it as cleaning up the charter agreement to put better definition into some of the language that was in there. From my perspective, I think it would be, be a good idea if we had our solicitor review these to make sure that it's not positioning Springersbury any worse in the charter agreement than what we already are. Make sure we're at least maintaining our status in there and not giving up anything for that. So I would suggest we table this resolution to our solicitors, have a chance to review it.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor to table? All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bishop?
Aye. I, I, I agree. I, I'll just comment that they can approve this without us anyway.
We know that.
It'll be interesting to see if they do.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Resolution 2025-48, accepting offer of dedication for fading way in the James Meadow Development.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2025-48, accepting offer of dedication for fading way in the James Meadow Development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-49, authorization to apply for Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant for Rockburn Park Playground Equipment in the amount of $82,474.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2025-49, authorization to apply for Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant for Rockburn Park Playground Equipment in the amount of $82,474.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution Number 2025-50, authorization to apply for Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant for Harvard Hill and August Schaefer Park shade units in amount of $22,908.
I'll move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-50 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-51, authorization to apply for Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant for purchase of a Skid steer. Is this more Denny's toys? In the amount of $129,700.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2025-51, authorization to apply for Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant for the purchase of a Skid steer in the amount of $129,700.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, takes us to the end of that category. Old business, anything that we want to discuss on the old business list?
Not tonight.
All right, moving on to new business. We've had our York, Explore York presentation. So acknowledged receipt of the 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Police Pension, Death and Disability Fund in the amount of $996,683.
Mr. Chairman, I move to acknowledge receipt of the 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Police Pension, Death and Disability Fund in the amount of $996,683.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have acknowledged receipt of 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Non-Uniform Pension Plan in the amount of $173,714.
Move to acknowledge receipt of the 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Non-Uniform Pension Plan in the amount of $173,714.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Acknowledged receipt of 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Teamsters Pension Plan in the amount of $203,611.
Mr. Chairman, I move to acknowledge receipt of the 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Teamsters Pension Plan in the amount of $203,611.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that takes us to the end of our business this evening. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.